Hello, everyone. I'm Barbara Nickel and I'm president of the League of Women Voters of the Mount Baldy area. The League of Women Voters started in the 1920s. We started as a result of passing the right of women to vote in 1920. We say that we defend democracy by two primary things: promoting voting. One of the things we do is try to get everybody to vote, regardless of which side you're on or anything. We do not promote candidates and we do not promote parties. We do sometimes promote policies if we have studied it and we have come to a conclusion about it. The other thing we do is educate voters. We want voters to know as much about candidates and policies and everything as they can before they vote. The League of Women Voters of the Mount Baldy area covers from Rancho on the east to Glendora on the west and south to Chino. We cover all of those areas, so anybody who has in those areas could call us and get our help for a variety of things. Okay, I'm going to start the questions and I'm going to start with John Mendoza. I'm going to give you the first question this time. And our first question. What, Rachel?
We're going to start with opening statements.
Thank you. Rachel has to keep me on track, you know, I'm getting old. But we'll start, we're still going to start with John Mendoza. John, you have two minutes to make your opening statement.
I just want to introduce myself to the public. Matter of fact, I live at Parkin McKinley across the street from the Apollo Marisol. And I started my political involvement here in Pomona in the year 2000 when I helped out with the number Torres. She was running for city council against Billy White at that time. And then after that, I helped out number Torres again for the assembly and the senate race. And then there was a time period, it was an assembly member, Rob Riggs was running for office and also Torres. And then 2008, I launched my own campaign. That was for the water board and also for the city council. And so I ran dual at the same time and I got elected to the water board, Three Valleys Water Board at that time. And I served two terms on the water board and also on the redistricting commission, which drew the new lines that we have today. That's about it for now.
John Nolte, you're next.
Great, thank you so much for putting this on. I really appreciate it. My name's John Nolte. I am the current city councilperson in District One and I'm running for reelection. This year, I've been 20 years in Pomona. I came here from UCLA Law School and we never left. One of the best decisions my wife and I ever made was to raise our family, our four kids here in Pomona. We love this city. I was elected to city council in 2020 and I got right to work. Because of my work with tenants during the pandemic, my first priority was to work on passing a rent stabilization ordinance to protect tenants and to keep people in their homes. I consider that to be a first line of defense against homelessness. With my colleagues on the council, we greenlighted hundreds of units of affordable housing. I led the effort to obtain a $5.2 million state grant for gun violence prevention. We created the first office of violence prevention at City Hall that has a mission to quickly and dramatically reduce gun violence using research-based street outreach to intervene before violence happens. It also includes over a million dollars for mentorship and coaching of those most likely to shoot or be shot in our city. We expect to see great progress in the very near future. I played a key role in bringing $22 million in a transformative climate communities grant to help establish green jobs in the solar industry, make electric vehicles more affordable for people, allow them to put solar panels, help to do that. With local community organizations, I established the Pomona Jobs Project, connecting unemployed and underemployed residents to good jobs. If I'm reelected, and I hope I am, I intend to keep working. I want to continue to build and preserve affordable housing and address homelessness. I want to expand my work on regional economic development and well-being, ensure that the projects that we've already started continue, continue to create jobs, continue to monitor and make sure that our parks are welcoming, and continue to work with my colleagues to make Pomona a better place.
Thank you, John. Luis, your opening statement.
Yes, hi, good evening. My name is Luis Cano. I've been residing here in 1997 and on and, you know, raise a family out here, worked for a union beforehand, and then decided to become a real estate agent because I spoke too much. And I'm like, you know what, I need, I need, I need to find another job. So I became a real estate agent. And then now what I'm trying to do is I'm trying to, instead of people becoming, 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 what is that one word? Just becoming becoming a full-time tenant. I want them to become homeowners. So, you know, to me, homeownership brings, brings a lot of stuff in regards to like, in regards to, you know, bringing wealth to their family. You know, that's one of the things when, when I, when I became a homeowner, you know, we built equity on, on our property and then you, you, you get wealth. And I'm trying to educate more people in regards to that. And I think that's, that's something that we want to do over here. Raised my, my children out here ever since 1997. I have, I have a wife that's, that's, she's a nurse, she's an RN, she's a registered nurse. As a matter of fact, she's probably going to be coming in right now. I have a daughter that does the same thing. My, my son's a teacher. He's, you know, he's, he's graduating from Cal Poly this year. And, and, you know, I love living in Pomona. I just think we just, we need to do a little bit more things just to make it a better place.
Thank you, Luis. So first question I'm going to ask, give to John Nolte. And John, the question is, what issues do you feel are unique to District One and how would you address them?
Let's see, in District One, it's interesting because our district is newly redistricted as of January 2023, so a year ago with the census. So now District One includes all of the Fairplex and Ganisha Park, a part of the Hacienda Heights Historical District. When I think of District One and some of the big issues that are coming up, the first one that comes to mind is the Fairplex. And they're going through what's called a specific plan right now. So the Fairplex and the city are working on a vision for the next 30 years that will come before the council and we'll have to determine if we agree and want to pass that, that specific plan. Right now, that plan includes a lot of what I consider exciting, but also somewhat scary things. There's the possibility of constructing 10,000 units of housing in, in the 500 acres of the Fairplex. That would involve major green spaces and green belts for walking and recreation. New streets would be built through it right on the transit hub that, that comes in at Laverne and very near to the Pomona Transit Hub that's coming on the, the A-line. So I think that that's a big thing. I think the big thing that we need to do in the next four years is make sure we listen to residents about that. Make sure that we understand what their concerns are. We can answer those concerns or we can learn from them what the holes are in the plan that's being proposed and make sure that as a community, as District One, we go forward together. Really quickly, the other thing I would say is Ganisha Park. I want to make sure that, that we look at the hills of Ganisha Park, make them fire safe and make sure that Ganisha Park is a place where people feel welcome.
Thank you, John. Same question to Luis. Do you want me to repeat the question?
Yes, please.
What issues do you feel are unique to District One and how would you address them?
Well, you know, kind of something kind of like what John Nolte said, you know, the demographics has totally changed because of the redistricting. So we have, we have the Ganisha Hills, which is totally, totally different than what it is over there by Hope Boulevard. So it's, it's kind of different. So I, I know, I know as far as like over there by Hope, there's, there's a lot of issues in regards to homelessness. Business, business people that they have to deal with homelessness and stuff like that. And, and to me, I would like to actually help them out. So that way, you know, businesses can thrive because we do need economic development. On, on the other hand, on the, on the hills, on the hills, it's a totally different demographic than, than what it is over there on, on Hope. So, you know, we want to keep safe neighborhoods. Different type of neighborhood than, than what it is over there by Hope Boulevard, so.
Are you done? I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. John Mendoza, what issues do you feel are unique to District One and how would you address them?
I think that on the south side, the, what needs to be done is we need a lot more street improvements. Streets are like really run down in District One. A lot of the alleys haven't been paved. That needs to, that needs to be, we need some, some business development along Hope Boulevard, you know, to help create jobs in that area. Also, I've talked to residents, there's a lot of problems with speeding cars and so forth and then the different neighborhoods over there, housing and so forth, affordable housing. In terms of the people on the hill, where I live at, near the Ganisha, I mean, Fairplex, I think there needs to be a lot more transparency and outreach to the community about exactly what's going on at the Fairplex and the proposal for housing that's being proposed. I would address that by having, if elected, immediately start having community dialogue with, with members in that area, Zoom meetings and so forth to bring everybody up to date as to what are the proposals are. In terms of the parks, we, we need more funding for our parks and so forth. And I would like to utilize more effectively the Measure W stormwater tax that was passed by voters.
Thank you, John. Thank you. Question two, I'm going to start with Luis. And Luis, this is question two.
Yes.
What is your top priority for Pomona and what are two concrete steps you can take as a city council member to address that priority?
Okay, so, so economic development, that's the biggest thing that, that I'm kind of looking at. We, we need more businesses in our, in our big arteries that we, in our streets, our arteries in our, on our city in regards to Gary, Mission and, and Hope. By doing that, well, we would have to bring in more, more businesses. And, you know, thinking about going to ICSM, you know, and bringing in other people to bring in businesses to our city. The other thing is, I know when I talk to the business people on Hope, they're basically saying, you know what, we cannot do any type of business due to the fact that we have homelessness sleeping on, in front of our, in front of our storefronts. And that's going to be the other issue that we need to deal with. So we didn't, we needed to deal with homelessness and then we also need to deal with, with new businesses.
Thank you. John Mendoza, same question. What is your top priority for Pomona? And what are two concrete steps you can take as a city council member to address that priority?
Well, one of the ones is economic development along the Hope Corridor. Start streamlining more attention of elected to office and start concentrating on what, what, what the city can do to start loosening some of the restrictions on building and so forth. Tax breaks, less restrictions imposed and so forth. I think there's, there's not enough somebody in the city council to bring more attention to that, to that particular district. But we need somebody that's not going to, you know, fall out and, and be concerned about more other, other parts of the areas. We have a lot of wasteful funding. Also with our rent control, we need to, to adopt a rule policy that, that's going to work because last two council meetings I've attended, people have been actually in there some crying, you know, being evicted on Christmas Eve and so forth. And then we have a polarized other section where, you know, the owners of the property. We got to work on a real effective solution to that problem and not just big grant standing, you know, proposals that when in real life, they're, they're not working, you know? So that's some of my issues right there.
Thank you. John Nolte, same question. What is your top priority for Pomona? And what are two concrete steps you can take as a city council member to address that priority?
Well, I think one of my top priorities is also what, but my forum members here have said, economic development. I think that the Hope Corridor, fortunately, I, we've allotted funding for the Hope Corridor. So within the next year, the, just like what's happening on East Hope, West Hope is going to see massive improvements. Part of that $22 million grant we brought in is going to make massive improvements on, on the Gary Corridor. So I think making those street improvements is likely to really, you know, attract more businesses. And our zoning code is being updated so that we have the ability for people to, you know, build housing much more easily. And we envision a lot of housing along those corridors, which I think will bring income and businesses in as well. One of the projects I'm working on is the, as I mentioned, the Pomona Jobs Project, which is specifically connecting low-income Pomona workers that are unemployed or underemployed to good local jobs so that they can work locally, receive good pay, not have to travel far distances and improve their quality of life. I'm working with anchor institutions like our universities and the hospital. We're working on a plan whereby those institutions will direct their purchasing power into the communities to invest in job creation, in possibly housing and other economic investments that will allow us to have spending that from those institutions to create jobs and improve economic development. I think economic development has to be handled at a regional level so that we can take advantage of, of the economic power that's in our region for the benefit of Pomona.
Thank you. Question three, I'm going to start this round of questioning with John Mendoza. John, question three is this. Pomona is in its first year of a 10-year contract with Athens Services for Waste Disposal. What is your opinion of how the contract is being handled and did the city make the right choice?
I think that this whole process for awarding the contract was, they took, the city council just took it to the minimum standards in order to get it passed, which means that was just one public hearing or a public hearing where property owners had to take in their parcel IDs. Non-producers couldn't vote or anything. There was a very, very low turnout at that, at that time. Right now, I hear businesses throughout the city that are saying, we're paying double the rates now. I was paying $500 for trash before pickup, now I'm paying $1,000 right now. Residents are paying 70 at the minimum. And our water bill is, it starts off at $100. City council said that this was for the better of, for us all, you know? I, I tried to initiate a petition recently to try to put it up to the voters and I'm still working on that one. So let the voters decide as a whole. As far as residential trash, it seems to be working, it seems to be working okay, you know, but businesses are really being hurt by this. And, you know, when you have businesses paying those kind of money, it kind of affects your, you know, what they can do or jobs, you know? And so that's a real, that's, that's, that's not very good. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Same question, John Nolte. Pomona is in its first year of a 10-year contract with Athens Services for Waste Disposal. What is your opinion of how the contract is being handled and did the city make the right choice?
Well, I, I voted for that choice, so yes, I stand, I stand by it. I think a couple important things to understand is, you know, we were facing very old trucks. So we were going to have to make, in order to keep our service up, we were going to have to buy a new fleet of trucks. That was going to be very expensive. We were also facing the implementation of SB, I think it's 1383, which was passed by the state, which is the, the law that requires separation of organic material. Cities are required to implement a plan to, to make sure that all residents and businesses are doing that and to collect it. It has a lot of enforcement mechanisms and, and eventually we'll have fines and things like that. So the implementation of that program and making sure that we were on track to be able to do that was going to be very expensive for the city. We were looking at a lot of rate increases, particularly for residential trash. And so, you know, as, has been looked at in the past, we looked at, you know, we put out a request for proposals. We looked at the best and most economical proposal, which Athens presented. The other thing I'm, I'm proud of is we negotiated with Athens that all of our workers that were working in our city trash would have the opportunity to be employed at Athens, receive a bonus for doing so, and also be union members with the Teamsters. So it's a difficult transition, but given the financial situation that we were facing, we actually saved residents a lot of money through this contract.
Thank you, John. Luis Cano, same question. Pomona is in its first year of a 10-year contract with Athens Services for Waste Disposal. What is your opinion of how this contract is being handled and did the city make the right choice? Luis, you need to unmute yourself.
There you go. Yeah, so in regards to the Athens contract, I'm going to have to go with the same route as John Mendoza. So, so I ended up going to a meeting. This was in regards to rent control, but most people were talking about the Athens contract. And they were talking about, you know, how, how the business people, they had to pay, they had, they had to pay double the amount of, of the payment. You know, for us, you know, as far as economic development, we got to keep, we got to keep, and we got to keep these businesses in business. So, you know, with them, for them, having employees, paying employees, paying income tax, paying, you know, I guess paying a rent or paying their building, they have to also paying, you know, also paying the, the trash is, is a little hard for, for, for the actual small business. And, and we need, we need to help, we need to help, we need to help out the business community. So in regards to this, I, I really, you know, I didn't really read the contract in regards to that, but it is, is affecting the business, the businesses. So that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Question four, I'm going to start with John Nolte. And this is the question. Homelessness has continued to increase year over year. How do you propose to meaningfully address the situation?
So while it's true that, that homelessness in the county and, and is increasing and it is a crisis, there's no doubt about that. Actually, in Pomona last year, we were one of very few and perhaps the only city where we actually saw a decrease in homelessness. I think that's due to proactive action that we've taken as a city council. We've fully funded the Hope for Home, Homeless Shelter that provides 200 beds for individuals experiencing homelessness, along with services to help them transition to permanent housing. It's, it's got rave reviews and is a model for people everywhere in the county. We just recently increased by 45 beds with a hotel nearby for homeless individuals that are kind of the most difficult cases. So, you know, we have been able to move people off the streets and, and into permanent housing. That's our policy. We have a very strong housing department. We have a unit at, at the police department that works on those issues. That said, there's a lot more that we can do. I think one of the things we definitely need to do is increase the amount of beds that we have in Pomona and in the region for homelessness. This is a regional problem that Pomona can't deal with on its own and shouldn't have to. So I intend to work on leading a partnership with our surrounding cities to deal with the Pomona or to deal with the homelessness issue as a region. I think it's really important that we make our parks free of homeless individuals that are, you know, threatening or, or making it difficult for people to relax in our parks. And doing that really does require that we have the ability to place them in, in beds. So I would do that. So I think the two things are increasing beds.
Thank you.
And that with public-private partnerships and working as a region.
Next person to answer this question is Luis Cano. Luis, homelessness has continued to increase year over year. How do you propose to meaningfully address the situation? Unmute yourself, please.
So homelessness is a, it, it's, it's a very, very difficult situation. And, and the reason I'm saying that is because, you know, most, most homeless people, I've, I've, I've talked to several homeless people and there's, there's, there's different reasons why everybody's out there. Totally different reasons. And, and I think, I think there should be a squad out there interviewing some of these homeless people and see why, why they're out there, you know? As a real estate agent, you know, we always ask like, you know, seven to 10 questions just to see where they're at. And I think we need, we actually need to, we need to do that. We need to build like maybe a relationship and then kind of like guide them where, where they need to be.
Okay, thank you. John Mendoza, same question. Homelessness has continued to increase year over year. How do you propose to meaningfully address the situation?
I just wanted to explain that I live close by the Pomona Valley Hospital. And every day, I witness homelessness in my neighborhood. There's a lot of homelessness people out there. A lot of them are sick. You know, they physically sick, mentally sick. Well, I can hear them sometimes out in the middle of the night. People out there fighting and screaming and right around the area where I live at, you know, they drift all over the neighborhood. It's a very serious problem. The city council, when they passed the measure for the sales tax increase back in 2018, they identified what they were going to do is work on homelessness. Like you said, it's gotten worse and worse since, you know? We need to start streamlining more of that tax that was passed by the voters and to see what we could do about the, the homeless situation. If I was elected to the city council, that would, that would be one of the first things that I would put on the table again. Because we have two kinds of realities. We have the reality of the city council and the city government that puts policy in place and then the reality of what's taking place in the street. And so that's why, one of the reasons I, I want to run for city council because what government says and what government is doing is two, two different things. So that's my comment on that. It's a regional problem, homelessness, it's not just in Pomona. And it started way back, you know, when people started taking away medical coverage, kicking, you know, people out of hospitals and so forth.
Thank you, John.
It's a regional problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question. John Mendoza, you'll answer this question first. And the question is, how do you intend to connect with and serve marginalized communities within Pomona?
Well, one of the ways that I've been proposing, going door to door recently and also for six months, when I put a local tax measure on the ballot, is I think our elected officials need to start connecting more with the community and start having more community meetings. I, that's been, you know, that's been a big fault, but like many of the council members, you know, I'd like to start having Zoom meetings with community members of ones that, that can't make it to these neighborhood meetings. And that includes the marginalized ones. Start reaching out to the marginalized. But I think that's a, a big problem here in our city of Pomona is the community involvement and community engagement of elected officials being present all the time in the community, not just with one social group or another social group, but with, with the total community as a whole. Thank you.
John Nolte, same question. How do you intend to connect with and serve marginalized communities within Pomona?
I think that the, I mean, the most important connection that we have is typically through our community organizations who have outreach into the community. So you have nonprofit organizations, I'm on the board, for example, the Latino Latino Nonprofit organizations, I'm on the board, for example, the Latino Latina Roundtable of the Pomona Valley. We have organizers that spend time. You know, meeting with community members. We have. The Pomona Economic Opportunity Center, for example, that has, you know, very strong connections into. The day labor community and, and other immigrant communities in, in town. We have churches that have. The ability to reach out into marginalized communities. I think that working together with community organizations, supporting them as a city. Utilizing them to reach people who have a difficult time coming to city meetings. I think having. Meetings in, in all the languages translated that are necessary, particularly obviously Spanish. I, I do speak Spanish, so that helps me. To, to connect with across, you know, many different communities. But I think it, it really is a concerted effort. We've at city hall been putting a lot more energy from a staff level into making sure that our social media has good outreach and. And is in, you know, different languages. And, you know, that's really a priority for me. I think we definitely need to be. Hearing the voice of marginalized communities, making, making ourselves available to them and also serving their needs.
Thank you. Louis Cano, same question. How do you intend to connect with and serve marginalized communities within Pomona?
Well, I mean, I'm a real estate agent, so I talk to everybody. So it just, it just, you just have to talk to everybody. To me is having. Possibly a meeting once a month just to see what's going on in the neighborhood or in the community or so forth. Also be engaged with all, all of the, all of the community, you know, leaders. That'll be the, the other thing. Another thing that a lot of people are talking about is just maybe talking to the, to the surrounding cities, surrounding cities. They have a lot of. A, a, a lot of good ideas that can actually help us out as well. So communication and, and also be transparent.
Thank you. Question number six, I'm going to start with. Louis, is that right? Yeah, Louis. And that question is, how do you intend to improve Pomona's environmental footprint? And please unmute yourself.
Well, as far as environmental, I mean, I, I think, I think us as a state. We, we've already been, we're, we're, we're very improved as. We, we might have to do maybe more solar, more solar energy, you know, maybe, may, maybe make a little bit more affordable. Like, you know, like. Electrical cars and so forth. But, but other than that, I, I believe that the whole state has, has actually been improving as a whole. So. I, I, I think, I think we're actually pretty good. We're actually going, we're, we're like one of the. We're a state, we're, the state, the whole state is actually leading in, in regards to being green. So I think we're actually pretty good.
Thank you. John Mendoza, same question. How do you intend to improve Pomona's environmental footprint? You're muted. John. There we go.
I think there's a lot of laws already that are being put in effect by the state of California that are requiring. Cities to improve their, their environment, you know, in the communities and stuff. And. But I think we have to be more holistic when we start making policy at the city council level, you know? And concerns like with the environment, for example, the, the warehouse ordinance that was established recently. And was addressing truck traffic and pollution and so forth. It fell, fell through the cracks. And, but it was heard businesses also. But I, what I noticed is that the emphasis was mostly focused on the southern section of the city where. In my particular neighborhood like this, we have diesel trucks going through the neighborhood all the time. I think we need to, to expand more on using funding to create more green space. Not only in our parks, but in our schools. I frequently attend the Safe Clean Water Program. Tax measure meetings all the time on Zoom. And. I zoom into Santa Monica, I zoom into all the different watersheds. And I, I'm starting to, to see now that what they're using their funding for, what their allocation is for. Parking improvements, green space. Projects on school grounds, trees. Walking paths and so forth. But there hasn't been that ever here in the city of Pomona.
Thank you very much, John. John Nolte. John Nolte, same question. How do you intend to improve Pomona's environmental footprint?
So first of all, I, I want to reiterate, we, we were successful and I played a key role in bringing the transformative climate communities grant to Pomona. We just announced that. Last week, I think it's twenty-two million dollars. It might go up to twenty-eight million dollars. That is going to establish green jobs in the solar industry. I think if we can connect greening of. Our environment to also economic development, we do well. We're gonna have lots of opportunities to improve. The solar energy job sector as well as just the solar energy creation in the valley. We're gonna make. Gary Corridor more walkable, plant lots and lots of trees. It provides funding so that low-income families can afford electric vehicles and electric bikes. And put solar on their rooftops. I think all of that is gonna help. I think that our warehouse ordinance is, is really important. It's gonna be made part of our permanent zoning. That will make sure that we don't, you know, have the, the problems that, that cities to the east have had with massive warehouses. That bring truck traffic and pollution. We need to implement SB thirteen eighty-three and recycle our green waste. Fairplex provides us a huge opportunity to, to develop the, the green energy sector to make our new developments very green. We, we received a ten million dollar grant to do the San Jose Creek Trail, which I've been pushing for over a decade. That's gonna connect Ganesha Park to Cal Poly. Along the, the creek, which will provide opportunities for, for recreation and walking. So all of those things will, will be important.
Thank you. This last question, this is our last question and the person to answer first will be John Nolte. As more and more issues such as housing, transportation and environment. Require regional solutions, how will you approach working with other government agencies to meet Pomona's needs?
Well, I think that a model for me, I'm on the board of Tri-City, so that, that's a three-city Claremont, Laverne, Pomona. Board where we have an agency that has funding that we work together as a city on, on mental health issues. So I think it's possible to create institutions that are, are cross, that cross city borders. And, and allow us to make decisions. That, that's, for example, how we built the Gold Line, which is now the A-line. You know, you have a, a joint powers authority that's able to, you know, direct funding for larger projects. I think we need to treat the Pomona Valley itself, this side of Kellogg Hill, as a region where we are working. As joint cities on economic development. I mentioned the, the Anchor Institution project that I'm working on. That's really important to me. We started to bring colleges, universities, hospitals, the Fairplex together to begin to understand that they should have a mission as. Public institutions that are anchored to this region to direct their purchasing power. In other words, their ability to, to contract and spend money. To create jobs in the Pomona Valley. So if we do that, we'll be able to, you know, have local jobs. They can be green jobs. We can create worker cooperatives. We need to really start to create institutions like an anchor institution collaborative that will allow us to cooperate. On regional economic development. And I've already started to work on that and hope I can continue to do so.
Thank you, John. John Mendoza, same question. As more and more issues such as housing, transportation and the environment require regional solutions. How will you approach working with other governmental agencies to meet Pomona's needs?
I would just like to break down some of the barriers that exist right now in our, our government. And if elected to the city council. I would, I would. Contact with the Sanders County Voter Supervisor's First District, Hill de Salles. Some of the other economic. Partnership in the San Gabriel Valley and play an active role in, with, with dialogue. Also, I'd like to be in a position, if elected to the city council, to, to be elected to some of those boards. So that could be a more effective in having dialogue with what other cities doing, the San Gabriel Valley COG. San Gabriel Valley Economic Partnership. Safety Water Program and just all the different agencies involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Louis Cano, same question. As more and more issues such as housing, transportation and the environment. Require regional solutions, how will you approach working with other governmental agencies to meet Pomona's needs?
All right, well, as far as governmental agencies, I, I know I, right now I, I deal with the Congresswoman in regards to housing, housing issues. So when we, when we basically talk about like affordable housing or possibly Section Eight and, and stuff like that. We have, we have a pretty good relationship as far as talking in regards to that. The other thing is with the assembly member, when we do have like housing issues. You know, well, on a state level, we actually talk to, to him and, you know, we kind of do a lot of, a lot of good things and. You know, he is our ear in, in regards to housing. I'm all about housing, house, housing affordability and so forth.
Thank you, Louis. Okay, now it's time for closing statements. You each have two minutes. And Louis Cano, you will start with your first, with two minutes for your closing statement.
All right, so, so as far as me become, if I do become council member. I mean, the, the things that I'm always looking for is, since I've been here since nineteen ninety-seven, I'm always looking for economic development. We always want. You know, more businesses to thrive. Once businesses thrive, communities thrive. The, the other thing I, I also, well, want to say is. You know, as council members, I always want to educate people in regards to them owning their own home. And, and keeping their own home. That, that's the, that's the other thing. Once you, once you have a house. You become permanent and you, and you want to take care of the community. The, the other thing is, if we do become council member. I'm, I'm very transparent. My phone is always on, you know, as a real estate agent, I always have to pick up the phone. And sometimes, sometimes, you know, council members don't pick up their phone. I'm, I'm there, I'm there to pick up the phone. So. Very transparent. And that's it.
Thank you. John Mendoza, you're next. Two-minute closing statement, please. Unmute yourself, please.
If elected to the city council, I think I'd bring. A different dimension. To the table of having been involved as a past water board member. For Three Valleys and also for zooming in on all the different issues concerning climate change and so forth. I would just like to emphasize to, to the community that we need a change at city hall. We need. To create a new culture, to create more transparency. We have to have our city council meetings, can't be dragging on till like twelve o'clock at night when. You know, people have to sleep and our city council members are making decisions, you know, way past the hour. My. My, my television for meetings shuts off at ten thirty, so I don't get to see everything else, what's going on. We gotta put an end to that. We'll put an end to wasteful spending. We need to start thinking seriously about some of these tax measures that are gonna be on the March third ballot. We have one that's gonna. Want to extend the sales tax forever, when it was only supposed to be for ten years. And we have the other sales tax measure. To reduce the sales tax to ten percent. Idea behind reducing it is that it gives people a tax break, it gives businesses a tax break. And also. In the future, if the citizens of Pomona want to increase that tax back to what it was before, that it be for a certain reason or a certain purpose. Like homelessness, fixing streets, but not to continue to throw it into a pot of wasteful spending. I wanted to challenge some of the ideas in city hall. That's why I want to get elected and, and make a, a change. And so everybody, please go out and vote with the best candidate. And. Thank you very much for having the forum tonight.
Thank you, John. John Nolte.
Thank you. Thank you to John and Louise for being here and to the League of Women Voters. It's been a pleasure. I want to emphasize that it's been a, it's a humbling pleasure to serve on the city council. I feel like. I've been able to get a lot of things done in this term and I'd like to continue working for the people of District One and the people of the city of Pomona. My priorities are gonna be to build and preserve affordable housing. I want to champion a strong and innovative permanent rent stabilization ordinance to keep people in their homes as a first line of defense against homelessness. I want to expand opportunities for tenants to become owners by making it possible for them, when a building is being sold, to join together. And purchase that building and, and become owners of, of their own units. I'll advocate for the construction of housing of all types. I'll lead the creation of partnerships with surrounding cities to tackle the homelessness issue. Create more beds, ensure that we can make sure that homelessness is not affecting our parks or making them. Difficult places to relax and enjoy recreation. I'm gonna act strategically, as I have been, to increase local community wealth and economic development. By looking to our anchor institutions to invest in the city, creating regional partnerships, expanding the Pomona Jobs Project, provide local jobs for unemployed. And underemployed workers. And make sure that we're able to take advantage as a region and as Pomona specifically. Of the money that's coming down for green energy infrastructure development, particularly in the solar industry. I want to expand and restore our park landscapes, make sure that we have local workers that are taking care of our parks. I think that that will help them be better taken care of. Implement a park ambassadors program to make sure that our parks are safe and welcoming. And, you know, develop a specific plan to improve Ganesha Park, including the hills, make sure that they're fire safe. And restore them to the beauty that they once were so that we can make that Ganesha Hills and Ganesha Park. A destination point for, for everyone in the region. I, I'm endorsed by Mayor Tim Sandoval, colleagues on the council, local unions, the Democratic Party. I'm thankful for that support and hope I can continue to serve you. Thank you.
Thank you. And I want to end this by thanking each of the candidates for being here. I think it's really important for voters to hear from the candidates. Along the same issues so that they, so that they have a clear choice for themselves. I want to encourage everybody who's watching this to vote, encourage your friends to vote. Because the more people we get out to vote, the, the better local government can be. Sometimes people avoid local government elections, but that's a mistake. We really want everybody to vote. Okay, thank you very much to, to the candidates. Thank you to Rachel and Gina for helping me out tonight. And good night.